I will say for one, I'm a little bit disappointed because I know that we've talked the last time we came for the extensions. That was going to be kind of the last extension period. And it's kind of nerve wracking not seeing your submission of project costs and your proof of financing kind of makes me hesitant. We do feel a lot of questions, I know I feel a lot of questions because we talk about this project a lot. The fact that nothing has started on these dates, I catch a lot of feedback from citizens saying, well, this thing is never going to happen. This and that gets frustrating as a, as a council member when we're trying to push what you guys have given us. And then it just keeps getting kind of folded back in the next, almost like we're getting kicked down the curb. Or maybe some of your other projects or what have you. Not that we're not excited for the project as I am, but I, I, there's a lot of frustration at my end as well. And not, and not getting this stuff completed in more of a timely manner.
Yeah, I can definitely tell you the, the last few years have been extremely tough on our industry. Development of these projects has come to a complete halt of our own nation with where the high. When you could deal with the high construction cost before, but now with higher interest rates, it's, it's certainly. Even in the last six months, the dynamics have changed a lot. So, but we've also seen in the last month, it might be taking a turn for the other side. So either way, we feel like we're going to be getting these, moving forward, but everything's taking so much longer now than it ever has before. Let me tell you that.
So if the interest rates continue to go up though, this may or may not happen?
They, well, if they continue to go up, it's going to be tougher, that's for sure.
So there's a chance that this may not happen?
Not in my eyes, but I don't see the interest rates going up.
You're in good position, you're reported again, not asking for specifics, but with your equity investment.
Yep, equity investors are there, or they're all set to move forward on that side of it. So we're, we're good, we're good there.
How bad are the supply lines?
So there's now, since we've been in this for a couple of years, we understand the, you know, six, seven, eight different items that are very long lead items. So those get, this is a long project, I mean, it's, it's 17, 18 months. So we know we have to order those right away and they'll be there at the end. So we can plan that, I mean, when this hit us, it was a, it was a little tougher. But now we've built enough in the last two, three years to understand what those long periods are and we can incorporate that into our schedules.
Okay, and one thing I was, I'm just, you know, I don't trust Mr. Enner, but sometimes his timing, okay? And it's just saying that one of the issues is that the companies are having a problem kind of anticipating what their level should be as far as parts or whatever it is. So I mean, you might need something and they, you know, and it might be across the nation, there's a lot of inter project. And the companies you get these parts from might be, oh crap, didn't prepare.
And that's how we felt about two years ago, when it kind of first started. I mean, so like you typically get a couple of months, took you six months to a year. So, but it has downed back a little bit from there. I think it's down to a few items, like transformers, you're still going to order those a good year out before you're ready. So small projects that need a transformer, it's hard to get those ones done.
For those of us, or those of you just joining us, Dave, our IT guy said we are back up streaming. So for those that see the agenda, we did skip over number four, the public hearing on the budget in hopes that we would have the streaming backup. So we are on number five, which is the discussion with Kip Golden of C R Structured regarding the status of the Confluence project on the Eastwood River for those of us joining us again, streaming the meeting.
Just by way of comment, folks just joining the meeting that might be watching, you know, questions had arisen about further delaying the commencement of the project. Kip, I know we had myself, Elizabeth, a couple of council members, Darlon, Bill anyway, over in Nina and Asha. It'll be two years ago, December, it was a day that felt a lot like today outside. And we visited the Brin site, which was a windswept, empty site at the time. And the Banta Publishing, the former print facility, which was still a shell of a building with a beautiful and then cold windy view from the rooftop, as I recall, over the rivers. What's, just by way of illustration, and I know both of those incurred some delays in the original plan. What is the status on those?
So Banta's complete, it opened up in June of this summer, it is 70% full now. Those are all market rate apartments, 34 apartments, 41 parking stalls. And it was because it was an existing building here, uh, what $25 per square feet of commercial space. And that one, the commercial spaces are full. Obviously, the road hasn't been put into my, my commercial space, so that will take a little bit. It was supposed to be done this year, but that was delayed as well, but that's not us. And then the, uh, the Brin project we done in the February, we're not going to say March first. That's 43 units, 43 parking spaces, some outdoor parking spaces as well. And then the other one we're working on is Miles Kimble down in Oshkosh. That is 28 units and that will be complete in April 1 of this year, so.
That's an adaptive for you, so now it's another.
Another 120 years old building, a four story building that we remodeled to 28 units, so.
All market rate stuff?
All market rate stuff.
Clearly, you know, council members, I'm sure have other questions, clearly, this is going to go forward. We need to revisit the development agreement. These suggested dates in red are what Kip had provided today. I still pretty firmly believe this project is very capable of going forward. I did share with Mr. Golden today, you know, it's up to the council, but certainly if we, if we arrive in next spring and we're not breaking grants, the city needs to pursue other options for an important piece of property. So I think that was, again, barring some cataclysmic, please God, event between now and then. Turn on the news, we could have a cataclysm any day, it seems. But again, this is by way of updating, a follow up would be to bring yet another amendment to the development agreement to council for consideration.
Do you know what the TIF date was that we started this TIF? I know we didn't borrow the money for the project, but the clock would be ticking on the light of TIF.
Right, I would have to double check that out. Yeah, we're a couple of years into this TIF dis.
So that's, that's putting us behind as well in improvements that we can be doing in the future.
Yeah, we'd have to look to how that impacts the time period for the, the developer grants under this, that's a valid point.
Anybody else have any questions for Kip or project or? Well, he is here, Jeff.
So brought to my attention a while ago, back in 1975, within two blocks of there, there were human remains that were dug up. What, and this is not a probability, but I mean, it's a definite possibility because the Indians did use that as burial along rivers. Should that happen again during this excavation, what's going to happen?
I've never had that in my 25 years, but I have read about it in the paper, I mean, they literally come and show us now.
I think this is a major project in Oshkosh that is in that status right now.
Right.
Yeah, there, there are document, I'm no expert on this, but there are documented instances of recorded Native American remains of being unearthed in the, in the vicinity of the old St. Luke's church. In fact, there were newspaper accounts, city utility crews doing work. I can tell you, we've had Bob Fay, Old Northwest Research here in town, at least do a comprehensive report on any identified sites where of record, human remains have been found. The only other thing I would throw out there is this development site pretty much sits on the footprint of the old Eggers manufacturing plant. Now, that still doesn't mean, oh no, they built on top of, but that was a building pretty much of a full base level. You can find anything anywhere, I guess, but it's not virgin territory by, by any means.
Scott, I just wanted to, to go along with, with Adam's that. I didn't want to make Adam feel like he's the only one that's upset by it or disappointed. I, I, I'm feeling the same way with Adam too. I was just hoping this would be done a little bit sooner, but still very excited to see this thing go forward. I keep getting people asking when it's going to happen because they want to move in, so.
That's a good thing, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, there's a couple of neighbors of mine that are interested, but yeah, I just, hopefully sooner than better.
I do understand, but to put it in context, we had another market rate 45 unit apartment complex, not on the waterfront, but the city thought we were very close to the finish line on, and it didn't, ain't happening. It's not happening for totally different reasons or really related to restrictive covenants that are controlled by parties other than the owners of the site. But yeah, we've, we've not been batting at a, a, a good percentage when it comes to new market rate rental housing. It has been an identified, so that, not to, not to take away from any of the council members' comments, that only adds to the community's sense of.
Yeah, I didn't want to bring that up, but that was some.
The world is building a lot of market rate housing, what's, what's up to it.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, thank you, Kip, for being here and for giving us these dates. I would assume that next week, Monday, these will probably be for us.
Yeah, actually, I don't know, either next week, Monday, or the 21st, Monday.
Yeah, and in the meantime, keep working. We will.
Thank you, stay warm.
Don't, don't waste another vote, just keep working.
I do that.
All right, so then we're going to go from five back to four, which is going to be the public hearing on the proposed 2024 city budget. We have two of them, it's a review of resolutions to be acted upon at the December 4th, 2023 city council meeting and public hearing, but I'd assume maybe that is both of the same.
Yeah, I just.
Sounds like it should be.
Yeah, I was going to provide these resolutions just by way of introduction, because these are the actual actions. Council will be asked to take a week from tonight on the 2024 budget and then certainly open it up for members of the public, which I'm quick to scan. Or maybe I'll read through that too, speaking to the budget. So with that, I just, you have, do you have in front of you? Yes, copies of a packet of the various resolutions to be presented. And I've got them up on the screen as well, entirely a bit short, but it's big stuff. First of all, next Monday, council will be asked to vote on the resolution adopting the various general, the general fund budget, the various component budgets of the general fund for 2024. The budget is adopted in, in broad functional categories of general government, public safety, which is police, fire, EMS and inspections, public works, which is basically streets, engineering, fleet management, health and human services, this is the state chart of accounts that dictates this, it puts the senior center and the cemetery together. And then culture, rec and education is the balance of parks and rec budget. Other financing uses are things like transfers out, the biggest one of those being the transfer for retiree insurance over to the health insurance fund and budgeted contingency at just over 300,000 is also in that other financing uses. By way of commentary on the right over here, the proposed general fund budget totaling 12,236,497. That's an overall increase of 7.13% from 2023. The general fund budget is, as we've reported numerous times, is over 85% personnel cost. It's a people budget and major drivers in the increase are employee wages with 3% increases for non-union employees. Let me correct this next one, a 2-2 split for the fire union, eight, and that, that being 2% January 1, 2% July 1. That's the negotiated contractual increase. For the police department, it's actually a two, excuse me, a three, two split or a four, two split, depending on where you are in the years of service. So those, those are baked in, that's the second year of a three-year settlement. Also factoring into the increase in general fund budget, 15% increase in health insurance premiums. That means the city premium share at 85% will go up by 15%. The employee co-pay on premiums, which happens to be 15%, will also go up by 15%. There are also some increases in the employer share for Wisconsin retirement. The budget as presented includes two new full-time positions. Neither one of them is fully funded by the general fund, but I would point out that budget wide, we have two new full-time positions proposed. One is a public works maintenance person, that position is 80% general fund. And Matt helped me out, it was a sudden fly, 20% storm water for that maintenance position. I would point out, while that is a, if proved is a lift of one full-time position in public works, that cost of close to $80,000, there is an offset in that we are eliminating, we're proposing to eliminate two seasonal positions that cost about 40. So it's, it's about a net 42 lift to the general fund. There's also a proposed GIS coordinator position. There is not agreement from the Personnel and Finance Committee on how this position should be funded. As I recall, the motions on this from the three-member Personnel and Finance Committee did not oppose the position, but opposed funding at 60% from the utilities. And again, what, what is currently in the draft budget is 20% of this position being in the general fund in public works, 20% in Fund 291 Economic Development, the other 60% being 20% apiece in water, wastewater and storm water. And that's where the concerns of the Utilities Committee came. Honestly, if the council were to say, push that 60% back into the general fund, my response would be then frankly, get rid of the full-time maintenance worker position. Because we, we do have a budgeted contingency in the general fund, which escapes me right now, but it's like 60 some thousand dollars. It's an modest, true contingency. So that's an issue that needs to be resolved.
I have a question.
And the Utilities Committee had a different position on the GIS position.
Right. I'm just wondering, for the GIS coordinator, I like the idea of splitting out the 60% between the utilities. And I know part of the, part of the issue was that you didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, you didn't want to see that cost showing up on, on invoices?
Well, I don't want it coming out of the utilities because it's going to increase the utility costs.
Okay.
So what comes up on our utility bills at the standard, we have seven or eight dollar fees. I can see those all going up in the near future to continue paying for this fund. And the biggest gripe from what I hear from a lot of people, they hate those fees. They think they can't stand them, due to the increase, they don't like them. And, and this is only going to make their problems worse.
Okay, let's see, I'm just wondering, the position is 60,000?
No, the position is about 125. 125.
Okay, so it's 125 annually?
It's about 150, yes, it's 22.5 for each of these 20%.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at GIS right now.
Yep.
But then if you.
We're the exact one, but we said there'd be no increase to these fees and we came back in summer and we increased those fees.
Water and wastewater.
See, and that's, and that's the thing is that I'm not a believer in promising something. It's Murphy's Law, something's going to come up. And we made the promise, but things happen, you know? And I would be very interested to know what the, what the spread of the increase would be. I'm really super curious.
Well.
I'll say each one 22,000. So each, each household, what are their 6,000 some odd utility payers? So you could do the math and tip it three times. So essentially it's 60,000 a year in your utility payers at six.
So they're repeating 115 plus?
It's hitting each one of those about 22,000. General fund active, and then there's three different utilities.
So say about 1,000.
The full 60% is like a bill, the full 60% would be any utilities.
I, you know, in my mind.
I mean, I certainly consider and say, you know, I'm just going to use water and sewer, which are like each 2.6 million dollars. It's less than 1%, but at the end of the day, every dollar of cost is possibly contributing to a rate increase in the future. There's no denying that, I think that's what I've heard from, from Adam, he's, he's expressed a.
Well, we have, is there increases in, in, uh, facilities charges or anything to cover this? Or is it being absorbed by the general fund for each?
It's being absorbed by the operating budget of each of those utilities as proposed.
Now, is there a, is there a savings to the city to have this?
It's good, it's better management of our infrastructure. I'm hesitant to claim a specific savings, but I'll, I'll let Matt speak to that as well.
It, it's a lot of indirect savings for efficiency in managing our infrastructure, both the sanitary system, the storm sewer system, and then all the water utility. As we discussed at the utility, joint utility personnel, finance committee, electric utility has a hybrid of the GIS where they can actually utilize GIS with work orders and basically as they change something, they can enter in their time expenses and in a, in essence, come up with a, a cost for doing that task at hand. That will be the ultimate goal and then ultimately save time for report generation. So we're handling the water utility, we're doing PSC reporting and things of that nature. So there's those indirect costs that will save time and then better management of our infrastructure. Where, where is the old areas of the city? Where are the areas in need of low flows for water or sanitary? Where are the core modes that need the, the media infrastructure upgraded? And then as far as on the economic development side area, having the, a single map or the ability to generate a map for potential investors into the community that will show the zoning parcel and the available infrastructure and any type of improvements that you needed at basically the drop of the fender chip. So it is those un, unseen available benefits.
Right now, at this particular moment in time, we're better than flush with the storm water utility, correct?
It has a reasonable fund balance, yep. In this budget, as we'll talk about very briefly, it is proposed to shift street sweep over to, over to that utility from a solid base, but it.
Would that cover the increase in GIS? You said it was less than 1%. I'm just wondering if that less than one, that less than 1% could be absorbed by storm water? Since we're doing very, very good in that fund.
I mean, in theory, storm water could pay 60% of it, but I, I think, and these numbers aren't magic, but the thought is which, this position will largely be involved with utilities. And where Brian has an integrated GIS at work order system and it's in pretty good shape standalone there. The, the thought was to a greater or lesser extent, all three of these utilities benefit. You know, if you're, if you're mapping them, if you're, you're looking at facilities, storm, sanitary, water, all have them.
You know, because I mean, there's a great benefit to that position and what the end product is going to be. And I'm making the assumption that the electric departments mapping would be integrated with what we'd be doing as far as water, wastewater, trees, fire plugs, that kind of stuff.
I think to a certain extent, we should let it pick up the electric data and put it onto your mapping.
I think Brian wants to stand.
But then Brian still wants to stand.
Well, I mean, you could look at what this guy or gal would, would map it up for GIS and then just look at the electric. And, but I mean, you, you're going to save a lot of time when it comes to planning. And I mean, it, it's super beneficial, I think it's going to pay for itself in the long run. I'd hate to see us not have.
I can say, you know, and again, I can't cite a cost, say, it's when you have somebody come in and they want to know about a site, say for redevelopment, and you say, well, let's pull, let's pull an aerial map up from county GIS. Gee, we don't have a zoning overlay, so let's check that separate mapping. Then let's call Scott in engineering and see if we can point out where the utilities are. It's not optimal, it's not a real good first impression for Dr. I don't know, if we end up at a stalemate on this, the funding is in the, I don't want to throw quite flat on this right away. But if we end up at a stalemate next week, one solution would be approve the budget, but specifically put a hold on advertising and fill in this position pending the council action. The resources would be there. We don't typically do that, please God, I don't want to start coming back every time. Please God, I don't want to start coming back every time we have vacancy in an existing position. But I could also see this one as, well, no, maybe it'll come to a vote and be clearly resolved next Monday. But I see the potential for it taking up a whole night. And it's, it's important, but in the scheme of things, it's part of a forty-million-dollar budget.
I look at it as a position that we've never had. And is it a position we can deal without going forward? And I think the answer to that is yes. Um, I think it's more of a want and it is a need for us to do basic operations in the city. We should be looking into a firm that can do this because I don't see this being that big of a full-time position years out. Once that person here all the time. And I think that it would be the same thing with GIS. Would it be maybe a busy position the first year or two when it got, had to get kicked off? Yeah, probably. But once everything's laid out, the amount of work that person would be doing for GIS, I don't think would be the same as it was in year one and or year two. But again, I do think we can get by quite frankly without it.
If I could, Matt, Matt, could you speak to, I guess I didn't understand that there'd be a huge amount of, an inordinate amount of this position stat tied up in migrating data, but probably from the get-go, it would be pretty heavy into applications.
The migrating, I mean, we have a GIS system, uh, and we presently outsource the, uh, software end aside, side of things through NSA consultants. And in order for us to have data implemented, uh, we do contract with them presently. Uh, I know for a fact we are three years out, uh, as far as getting data from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three migrated into the system. Uh, just trying to get the appropriate data, uh, mindset and everything into it and then ship it down to the consultants so they can map it and that nature. Uh, just doesn't have the time or ability to do that in-house presently. So that's why we're looking at this, um, uh, position. But the migration over to a standalone system within the city versus a consultant, uh, you're, yeah, you're looking at three to six months probably time to migrate the data. And then it is sorting it out, making sure that it is adequate, uh, for our use and then making sure that it's maintained. Park and Rec just received, uh, information regarding their tree inventory. We have no place really to put it and nobody to manage it. So an application, uh, needs to be developed. So when we prune trees, uh, plant trees, cut trees down, uh, they need to be managed within this database or the database that we now have will be obsolete in three to six months.
But if you manage it as things occur, let's say we lose a tree, that's one thing that would need to be updated.
Yep.
Could you come back and let us know what the cost would be for one year for a consultant? Because I mean, everything comes down to money.
On the top of my head, I believe the utilities and Public Works, uh, spent about twenty-five to thirty thousand uh, for software licensing. So some of that will be carried over and we just see getting rid of the consultancy.
Could you come back with a breakdown?
I think you're speaking, I mean, I have, I'm checking back past invoices and things with Gartner.
I appreciate it.
So.
Hey, Jeff, that is Emma.
I'm kind of with you, Adam. I think that's something that we could probably farm all because one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year is a yearly thing, which will only go up. And nobody has really gave me a compelling argument yet why it's absolutely necessary. It's more of a want, like you said, than a need. It'll save time, but well, you can waste a lot of time for one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I'm, I'm just not in favor of the position. I think that it should be looked into and farm all.
Done.
This person, will they be doing more than just GIS? Are they going to have other responsibilities that are going to add value to the department? You know, or is it going to be strictly GIS work? I just don't remember that one-twenty-five is coming from.
I'll, I'll take that. I mean, uh, the position is proposed to be held within Public Works. So, uh, part of the, on the general side, general fund side of things, we're looking at doing a sidewalk inventory and tracking, uh, pavement ratings, sidewalk ratings. Uh, so we have that, we're readily available. So this individual then will be responsible for maintaining that. So that's again, direct benefit cost. Still do utilizing GIS, but now utilizing it for contract and improvements of our infrastructure. If you hire a consultant, they won't have that ability. I mean, yeah, we can hire somebody to come up and do that inventory for us. Um, but we can also let this guy, uh, or individual, uh, do any construction inspection aspect of it as well.
Okay, back when I worked in engineering, I remember going, we took a particular section of the city. It was me and, you remember Kevin? I can remember his last name, Perry, or ever Perry. And-
When he was the engineering tech, yep.
Right, and we spent, it was not that long, but we went along and we, we looked to see what was raised, what was a hazard, what was stalled, what was cracked. You know, it didn't take us that long to do that section. The section was pretty, pretty substantial. And, you know, I mean, you could have, um, I don't, I know it's probably difficult to get summer help, but there wasn't a lot involved in it. You had your criteria and if you had a bad ad, you would use paint, paint and put an X on it. So I don't know how much more this person would be doing, you know, when it comes to sidewalks.
Yeah, I feel it's a lot of money. And I feel that we talked a lot about poverty, it within our city. And the one thing that no matter what, if you're rich or poor, the one thing you have to have are the utility bills. Can't live without our water, pretty hard to live without electric. That's the one part of the bill that we always start to attack. And again, I, if, if this was more of a need than a want, it would be different. But I think it's more of a want.
Just to, if I could, to pull it back for purposes of tonight. Uh, to my recollection, I think that's, and it's kind of, it's a utility concern leading over into general fund. That the committee, I think that was really the only issue, if I, if I would, with the, with the general fund budget as presented.
Yeah, the, the major issue probably was that.
Yep, so just putting in, in context, that's about Harp and Sut, it's just a smidge of the total budget. I had the number for it on my head a few minutes ago, but, uh-
We just over the head, Scott's got one.
Just one question. So as it stands right now, the utilities fees are, if we would approve it with the GIS coordi- GIS coordinator, the utility fees would not go up?
The only utility-
Not today.
Right. The only utility increase-
Some summer?
Although there are two utility increases proposed. I was going to highlight this in a, a four percent increase on, uh, sanitary sewer, which is in the neighborhood of probably a hundred-and-ten, a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars total. So if you want to, you know, back twenty-two-five on that.
But not these utilities that you're charging this to.
Oh, yeah, sanitary sewer.
I thought it was stormwater.
Storm sanitary water, twenty percent piece.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I take that back.
So it would be a little less than one percent of that four percent of that fifty-five.
Okay.
Unless you cut somewhere else.
Yeah.
Okay. But general fund at twelve-point-two million dollars, give or take that twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred for the GIS position. I, I didn't hear major concerns from the committee on that. Again, the full budget, uh, draft for public review is out on the city's website. Uh, if any, and I know some council members attended some of the finance committee meetings. If you wanted to per dive on anything, I'd encourage you during the coming week. Be in touch with us all per day, we can direct you appropriately to the department. But that's the general fund. That's how we do plan to present it next Monday. Whether the council wants to vote up or down on funding for the GIS position or punt, if you will, and say this warrants further discussion, leaving your discretion. Otherwise, that's another twenty-two-five. If not funded, I'd say, well, add it to the budgeted contingency for the general fund. Sorry, there we go. Uh, capital projects and special revenue funds are typically lumped together in one resolution. Uh, capital projects funds listed there, harbor master plan implementation. We're not looking at spending any more money out of that fund, but instead transferring two-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, four-hundred-fifty-four dollars over to other capital projects, uh, streets, I believe we agreed on, to reduce the amount of new borrowing needed in the coming year. Uh, the others are as laid out there. I'm not going to do a deep dive on them, but bike trail construction, that's essentially the balance of the East River Street connector that got started this year. Uh, industrial park development fund, landfill fund, street construction, bridge construction. The big street construction project proposed for next year, which would be general fund borrowing or general obligation or and utility borrowing, is Roosevelt, which is a major, major reconstruction project, about five million dollars. Park and cemetery fund, fire equipment fund, public works equipment. Big thing there is paying for the balance on two dump trucks that were ordered this year. That's the totality of that three-hundred-thousand dollars. City Hall Equipment Fund is for some repair and maintenance, long-term maintenance activities around City Hall. Uh, Management Information Fund, that's our computer system, uh, including that cable, that cable that we'll need to pay sometime. And Police Equipment Fund is, uh, various equipment, most notably two replacement squads. I believe, uh, from my recollection, Personnel and Finance was fine on this with the stipulation in their motion that they would recommend the council review, uh, the request for two replacement squads and look at possible refurbishment with replacement of, of powertrain, uh, engine through transmission in the squads, which, uh, some agencies apparently have undertaken. That would be something for Chief, for Chief Minor to come back with. But, uh, those are the various capital projects.
Is he coming back next meeting?
I, I guess what I'd anticipated, because on any of this borrowing, we'll be coming back to council in January, February for final action. So I, I would recommend certainly adopting the capital projects funds as listed there, uh, with the provision that any of borrowing still requires council action. And that would include the two squads. That'd probably be internal borrowing anyway, as we've done in recent years. That's, we usually pay for those in three years. So the money would be in there if the council wishes to go ahead with that purchase without having to go back and amend the budget. But it couldn't be spent looking for a two-thirds vote to amend the budget. Typically, we come, always we come back with the actual borrowing request. And history is any indicator, it would be lower than what was in the budget, not higher. Special revenue funds are as listed up there. Again, I, I won't go into any of those in great detail. Most of them are TIFs. And as far as some commentary, the proposed capital projects that would be funded with new, uh, the, the amount of new tax-supported general obligation debt in support of capital projects would be just shy of one-point-nine million. Uh, and that, in addition to that, we'd be using two-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, four-hundred-fifty-four from that harbor master plan implementation fund, which is money borrowed, uh, over three years ago for the Hamilton property acquisition. I'm not suggesting the city shouldn't, when the time is right, acquire the Hamilton property for redevelopment. But the time isn't right yet because there's still environmental testing, including new monitoring wells being required by DNR. That's fairly late-breaking, that we want to see three new monitoring wells. So it's a good thing, but on the other hand, it's money we've already borrowed. And just like there was some money taken from that fund from previous borrowing last year, would recommend taking this amount. That would leave five-hundred thousand that was borrowed with a state trust fund loan that was explicitly for the purpose of Hamilton property acquisition. So that, that I would keep along.
And that's roughly half, maybe just under half of the purchase.
And the purchase price, it's been identified as one-point-five million dollars between purchase price and the city's cost of environmental life or coverage, whatever that may cost. But so that means, uh, we'll potentially be issuing quite a lot more GEO debt than a million-eight-eighty-eight, but, uh, new tax-supported, general property tax-supported GEO debt would be that number, one-eight-eighty-eight-eight-forty-six. We are retiring in the coming year, a little over two-point-two million dollars in existing debt principal. We see that in the, in the debt service budget. Now, other possible GEO borrowing in twenty-twenty-four, which the budget would provide for, but again, specific council authorization would be needed before we go out and borrow that money, is four-hundred thousand for two-seventeen shoreline and walkway work over by the West River lots. Assuming that now moves forward with the revised development agreement as approved by council three weeks ago. Um, we need to do that borrowing, but the pro forma shows the ability of TID seventeen to pay for that. So it wouldn't be out of general property taxpayers' pockets. If the confluence of the development you discussed earlier this evening with Mr. Golden goes forward, there would be the need to fund, uh, the developer grant, uh, that's in that, uh, development agreement. So that's potentially nine-hundred thousand. It's in the budget, doesn't mean we borrow it, that would take further council authorization. Two-hundred thousand for two-fifteen infrastructure work at the industrial park. Uh, we may choose to finance some of that internally or go to the market. Um, that would be needed to serve a new, uh, business out there that we hope to be announcing in December. Council's had those discussions in closed session. We've got to do a little extension of Brown's Drive of street utilities. And then, uh, in the budget also is four-hundred-fifty thousand dollars for the Washington Street Bridge bike pedestrian safety improvements and to be funded through TID twelve. So those potentially are all GEO borrowing, general obligation borrowing, but not to be repaid from the tax levy that goes to the debt service fund, to be repaid from those TIF districts. There's also in the budget possibility of proceeding with Phase Three of Sandy Bay, Sandy Bay subdivision project with borrowing of six-hundred-fifty thousand from the market to be repaid from lot sales. That would be up to the council to see if you're comfortable with that. And we also, with current cost estimates of a million dollars, there are identified some borrowing from the stormwater fund to be repaid from lot sales. So it's an ambitious program and I know the Finance Committee and, and the whole council, I'm sure, very mindful not only of project costs, but again, the interest rates that we'll be paying because we're not going to see the kind of rates we've enjoyed for the last five or six years.
And that's really why you're using the Hamilton money.
Yes, that was borrowed through a low rate of interest.
Double rates.
Yep.
Hoping that when the time comes to purchase the property, interest rates are back down again.
Right, or where there's enough compelling interest in development to make it feel worth while. Yeah. Uh, so that's, uh, capital projects and special revenue funds, which are typically acted on in one resolution that's shown here. Oh, I would mention too, I was thinking about just the other day. Uh, we do have, uh, in the Parks and Rec capital budget, fifty thousand dollars for an irrigation system for Central Park West. And certainly if possible, we'll see if there's interest in donations toward that, but that's in the borrowing. Uh, I think that should be broken out separately as, uh, continuing a budget for the Central Park renovation fund because that would be a spend of up to fifty thousand attributable to that project. And we've got about a hundred thousand in revenues from the, I'm sorry, the, uh, state grant from the, from the state, the dynamic, uh, dynamic spaces grant from W E D C, fifty thousand, and some deferred, uh, install, some installments on pledges. So if council doesn't object, I'd just as soon put that spend of fifty, fifty thousand in new money in there as well. in there as well as that other activity. So you actually have a budget next year that reflects both the revenue we're still expecting in and the spend out as opposed to varying it, if you will, in the Parks and Rec budget. The other thing that I frankly forgot about during the budget process, a couple of years back, we had budgeted money out of 290, the Act Dev Fund, the old CDVG money that was federalized. We had budgeted about $20,000 for some new signage for the Woodland Industrial Park. And if there was any money left, Columbus Industrial Park. We didn't proceed with that two years ago, we didn't budget it last year. I'd like to propose to the council that we budget that again for next year. And I know that I didn't think to bring that up during Finance Committee, so hopefully no offense taken there, but that, especially the main signage for the industrial park on 310 looks dated. It's like doing a set of favors out there, so.
Dated, it's put in nicely.
It is, yeah. I think we have kind of a tree that was growing up, maybe it was holding up to.
Yeah, oh, I hope it was.
Yeah, so we'd like to do something up there, and that was an oversight on my part. So I do plan on recommending that next week as an amendment to one of these resolutions. If you want to add back $20,000 for signage and fund to 9, excuse me, 291 Community Development.
2165 plus 20, it's not added in there?
Correct, it's not, it's not anywhere in the budget right now. Continuing that, the second page of the resolution on special revenue funds, oh, and enterprise funds. I'm sorry, because this is called the resolution adopting budgets for other funds. In the enterprise funds, just focusing on the fee side, solid utility, the budget, and thus proposed, and the Personnel and Finance Committee recommends, not that they're wild about any fee increases, but we had gone in proposing an increase of a dollar in the monthly environmental fee on the bills. Committee felt quite strongly that if we're going to increase the fee, it ought to be on the pay-as-you-throw, if you will, side of this. And I'm forgetting, but it was at least nine years since we last adjusted the sticker fee. So the budget is predicated on that going from $2.50 to $3. And that's proposed to offset projected increases in our tipping fees. And what we anticipate will be an increase in the Manitowoc Disposal Collection Contract. That increase could probably be deferred until final action on whether we amend the Manitowoc Disposal Contract, which is something we hope to bring to council through the Utility Committee pretty soon. But to make the budget fly with what we expect for increases, we need an, we need increased revenue somewhere. It's also proposed to transfer the street sweeping function out of solid waste over to the stormwater utility. I want to say that moves about $100,000 over to that fund. Water utility, there is no rate change proposed. And I can say on a stack of Bible staff, I'll be recommending one of those in 2024. Watch out in the future. The electric utility, there's no rate change proposed. The stormwater utility, no rate increase proposed. It will be taken on street sweeping. Sewer utility, maybe more properly called sanitary sewer utility. There is built into the proposed budget revenues that equate to a 4% general rate increase. And that's supposed to keep up with operating costs and with debt service on capital improvements that have been made, both at land and in the wastewater collection system. That would require a vote by council. I think we'd probably be looking at yet another increase that weighs more heavily toward the fixed monthly fee versus the variable fee that's dependent on your water usage. Face it, most, we have the same expenses pretty much. There's not much in the way of variable costs on sewer volume. So much of it is our fixed costs. So that's a quick summary on the enterprise funds. Again, you can find more detail out on the city website. Debt service fund, we touched on before, this is for principal and interest expenses associated with past city borrowings for capital projects. Debt service outlays are up 6.5%, or about $182,000. Bear in mind, not all of that comes from property taxes, general property taxes. Some of it is funded, some of that debt service is funded with transfers in from other funds, notably in various TIF districts. I think we might still have one or two utility issues today that are GEO debt that we transfer in for. So while the spend for total debt service is up by $181,000 next year, the debt service levy, which affects people's individual property tax bills, is up 2.82%, an increase of just over $70,000, almost $71,000. Lastly, I would turn to the resolution adopting tax levy and would remind you, while you see the resolution that the Finance Directors prepared over on the left, it includes for information purposes, the Two Rivers Public Schools levy, the very small levy for those, that portion of the Manitowoc Public Schools that lies within the city of Two Rivers, Lickshire Technical College and Manitowoc County. Obviously, the city only controls the first three. And the resolution adopting tax levy provides for the general fund levy next year to be unchanged from 2023, it's just shy of $3.2 million. The proposed levy in support of the Western Public Library, proposed increase by $50,503, or about an 8% increase in city property tax support. Over the current year budget, that total levy would be $681,790. I know the committee heard a presentation from Jeff Dawson and his management staff about the need for addressing employee wages at the library, which is needed to stay competitive and keep good people. That is recommended on a two-to-one recommendation of Personnel and Finance Committee, certainly recommended by the city manager. Remember, the council does not adopt the library budget, but does adopt the tax levy that goes in support of that library budget, which is the province of the library board. And then, as we just mentioned, debt service levy of $70,946. Please let that match. Yep, that does, what I had on the last slide. So in total, the city share of the tax bill levy goes up by $121,449, or 2.25%. And Dave, because I'm as tired of hearing myself as probably the rest of the people in the room, could you, could you walk us through what the current projection is as far as the impact on an average tax bill of all of the different taxing entities? Sorry to call on you.
If you don't mind me stating that last year, what was $2,310? It would be $224.43, or $132.18, 5.72% increase. And includes the change in the lottery credit amount and the first dollar credit amount and the state credit amount. So if, for example, a person, the parcel that they're paying the property tax on is not their primary home, they wouldn't get the lottery credit. Because that's only on your primary residence. So anyway, line by line, the school district is the big increase this year because of their referendum that they passed in the past years. And that's going up gross 18.77%. And looks like you take my little, I don't know, on the bottom, that net scale. This line, state school and the school district, is all lumped together as one number. So you don't see a separate state school credit on the tax bill. But as Greg said, the city's line would be up 2.41%, the county's up 2.3, Lickshire Tech, which is a smaller portion of the tax bill, but they are up 3.25, or $2.87. So that's kind of the way it's falling out right now. As a Finance Director, it always comes with a disclaimer that says, this is what it is as of right now, but it will double check, triple check, quadruple check before the actual goes along. So if you come and they're not exactly these numbers, you can call me and I'll say, well, I told you they might change. So that's the way it's laid out right now. It is a little bit of an increase this year, but it is an increase that's spread out almost all jurisdictions.
And those, the credits are always a wild card. We've seen them in past years decline year over year. You see, total taxes levy, but the taxing jurisdiction of our assessed house, up $214, if I'm reading that right. The NAT is only up by $132.
Correct.
All the credits, if you will, headed in the right direction.
Lottery credit seems to be, anybody's got the magic, how they calculate that?
On debt, it's 2734 on the left, and then debt service is up to 2589 on the right. Is that our increase year to year on debt on the right versus past debt on the left?
These three numbers here, General City Debt and Library are all lumped together on this line.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the top.
Oh, did I screw something up?
That's Greg.
2, I'm sorry, I did this in some haste. 2589. 2589, 571, here we go. Debt Service Fund is page 73.
It, um, it's, it's not unchanged. Greg, your general fund does not, would not be unchanged from 2023. It would be, except that these three is including the TID increments.
Oh, TID in, okay, I'm sorry. So what, the jet, okay.
The gross, it's not the levy as in the budget, because then there's the calculation for the TIF districts.
Yeah, because we're not paying GEO, or our GEO borrowing is not TID borrowing. I thought those are two different.
Now, what happens is, and I apologize for this, the resolution is TID in, if you will. So that reflects, there's, there's debt service levy on tax bills that doesn't go to the debt service fund because it's captured by a TID. Now, yes, the TIF funds often transfer money out to cover debt service. But the levies for city, for General City, did I do there? I'll put this. Oh, Jim, why am I off on General Fund though? I'm terribly sorry.
General Fund, General Funds, I'm not probably going to complicate it by saying anything, but the General Funds levy is like 2.250.
I'm sorry, that's, oops.
And then the add-on is like underneath $5,000.
You know what I did, I picked up total taxes, which includes the utilities payment and move of taxes. Oh, that's the error right there. So the numbers in the resolution are right. The levies for General City Debt and Library are all higher numbers than what those respective funds, General Fund, Debt Service Fund and Library Fund get, because that includes the debt service tax as well as General Fund and Library paid on increment in the TIDs, but it doesn't flow to the General Fund, Debt Service Fund or the Library Fund. It's captured and stays in the TIPS.
All of those, except for Manitowoc Public Schools, because we don't have any TIF districts that go into Manitowoc Public School District properties. All of these are higher than what we actually levy because of the TIF districts.
Is that, I, so again, that 2734 is not all GEO borrowing from the taxpayer. Some of that is captured by TIFs and their borrowing.
Not their borrowing.
Well.
It's the TIF improvement.
It doesn't, it gets borrowed on their behalf though.
Hmm, that's not a direct link there.
Not a borrowing.
We might have a TIF where we don't do any borrow. Maybe, maybe it's just going as a pay-go grant, say. It's just every, the levy for every taxing jurisdiction gets captured by the TIF. So, you know, if you had a million-dollar base value and somebody added a million in value, the additional taxes for General City Debt Service, Library Schools, et cetera, on that million dollars in increment don't go to those respective line items on the tax bill. Into those funds, they flow into the TIF, they get captured. So that's sort of the gross number. The numbers I meant to have on the right, that screw up on your general fund, which I apologize for, are the NAT. What does the city actually have to work with out of those three levies?
I thought out of when we borrowed, our general borrowing was 1.889 or something like that.
That would be the new borrowing.
Right, so that, that was my question. Does this include the borrowing of the last 10 years? Or is this the new borrowing that we're going after for this year?
This is not the new borrowing.
Okay.
This would be.
Because new borrowing would be the following year, correct?
Correct.
I didn't know if that's what we were stating on here, what was new, because we're doing percent change?
Okay.
We got it.
I think we borrowed 1.88 something, was it, huh?
That's what's proposed, $1,888,000 in change. Yep. Because generally, we try to be at or below $2 million. That's where we're able to end up. So yeah, that general fund levy should, be careful. That general fund levy shown there, it is unchanged. The levy that the general fund ends up. I'm some more update. Yeah. Should be $2,250,000, and it is unchanged from the current year. By the way, it was $2,230 the year before. So with the exception of that one glaring error, which I apologize for, that, you know, we're proposing to increase the library levy by $50,503 for the reasons stated earlier. The debt service levy, because it's going to take that much additional in taxes to pay principal and interest on debt already incurred. General fund unchanged, the total lift, 121,449, 2.25%. Yeah, zero is a lovely number, but you know what? City government isn't immune from the same forces that are affecting household budgets out there. So that is that, and I just would remind you also that council will be asked to vote on a resolution setting a special assessment levy. Again, levy is a dollar amount and rate for the Downtown Area Business Improvement District Board. The bid board met on October 26th, you've seen their minutes in your packet. They recommend keeping the rate at $2 per thousand of assessed value with a cap of no more than $2,500 per property owner, no less than $100 per property minimal. That's per the TIF plan that's been in place for over 20 years to raise an estimated $50,000 in support of the 2024 Main Street Program Budget. That overall budget is $159,548, disregarded that minus zero. So it's about a third of the Main Street budget. This was the subject of some controversy last year, including a special Yuletide joint council and bid board meeting. So I guess I'd just encourage you, if any of you have concerns, let us know as soon as possible. But the bid board, which is made up entirely of people who pay the assessment, again, this year is recommending $2,300.
And they are elected by Main Street?
They are appointed by the city manager, subject to council approval. And I've always tried to have it be made up 100% of downtown business or property owners that get impacted by the levy. So that is, sorry, got a little run on there. That's the overview. Would ask now that sort of chair convening the public hearing.
All right, we will open up the public hearing on the proposed 2024 city budget. Anyone wishing to speak solely on this topic, please stand up, state your name and address for the record. And we'll have three calls for the public hearing. Open up call number one.
I'm Stanley Palmer. For the Library Board of this fair city. I just want to, just want to thank you for.
Can you just state your name and address?
Yeah, Stanley Palmer, 331, 23rd Street. Anything else?
Nope, that's good.
I see it, okay, good. I'm going to switch it now hugely for about two or three minutes just to talk about the library and use words, not numbers, okay? So.
Okay, so, um, my name is Stanley Palmer, uh, and I'm president this year of the, uh, it's just two or three minutes, okay, so.
Yep.
I'm president of the board of the, uh, Leicester Public Library, uh, known as LPL. Uh, I'm speaking, uh, in, to some, towards, for the board, I think. Uh, and first of all, I would like to thank the city council for all your labors on this and every other, uh, thing I've been educated in, on all the other aspects of running a city. And I also wanna, uh, thank, uh, those citizens in Two Rivers, uh, who, uh, have submitted support statements, uh, to the city council on the question of whether there should be a fairly large, uh, salary increase for the people who work in the Leicester Public Library. Like I said, I'm in very brief, and I'm gonna leave. Uh, I just wanna talk real quickly about two recent facts concerning the Leicester Public Library. One is local and the other is, uh, national. Uh, just two. Number one, uh, the library, uh, as many of you know, has won state, uh, and now national awards. LPL's, uh, Storytime and now also the new Story Walk and the city's upgrade of Xander Park. Uh, remind us, uh, that, uh, there's, uh, that when you put together a garden's beauty and the enjoyment of reading, especially for these young kids as they walk around, uh, around the library and in Xander Park, uh, it really comes all together as you begin to sort of, uh, help kids, uh, learn to read. Number two is, uh, just a couple of words on the national level. Uh, LPL, uh, has been honored by the Smithsonian Institution in Washington DC. And when that, when Jeff Dawson got that notification in the mail, you know, it just blew all of us away. The Smithsonian, as it's called, is in fact a collection of twenty-one museums. It's huge. It's one of the largest museums in the world. Aluver, I think, is the number one in bigness. And, uh, so I looked it up in, sort of talking to you about all of this, and, uh, founding donor of the Smithsonian Institution, as it's known now, uh, goes all the way back to the year eighteen forty-six, uh, when a guy named James Smithson, who was a British scientist, uh, wanted to, uh, give, uh, a head start to that new and small, uh, American republic, uh, across the Atlantic. Just a few years ago, the Smithsonian announced it was going to finance in twenty twenty-four, a traveling exhibit, uh, one with the title of Human Migration in World History. All of the lockers in the United States of America were encouraged to applaud. Thousands did. I mean, it is a country of over three hundred million. So, uh, I just sort of made that up, but I, I think it must have been thousands that applauded in the fifty states. And there were fifteen winners. Just fifteen. Unbelievable. Leicester Public Library was one of them. It's a library that, uh, among the fifteen winners, is by far the smallest city having that library. To, to get that, it's unbelievable. It's just, uh, it, it just elevates, elevates, uh, what people are gonna find out about Two Rivers, and it's gonna be quite interesting. Tourism, people who might wanna come here, might wanna retire here, people like me. And it, it is the smallest city, and it's just hard to believe that in a city of eleven thousand people, in a place called Two Rivers, Wisconsin, uh, they won this classy, classy, big time award. So I just wanted to let you know, cause I know you're, you're contemplating and will ultimately vote on, uh, on the budget for the wonderful staff of the library. And as you well know, Jeff Dawson, he was just fantastic, wicked heaven. Thank you, thank you very much. I gotta leave now. I do have all of this to mention. But, uh, thanks for, oh boy, it took me back to college, you know?
Sorry, we made you endure that, Stanley.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on the first call of the public hearing? We'll close the first call, we'll open up the second call. There's really no one here, but for formality, we will close the second call and open up the third and final call of the public hearing. No one else wishing to speak on it? We will close the public hearing. And I do not have a vote on, uh, on our agenda, so we do not have to vote on anything either, which we can skip over number six. We are not ready, or I should say, the, uh, Two Rivers Family Swim Center is not ready to come talk to us quite yet regarding their planned capital campaign and possible city operating assistance. To that center, it looks like that will be pushed off into January, correct?
Yeah, I expressed a preference to the group that that discussion lends itself better to a work session than a regular council meeting. We're not planning a work session in the midst of the holidays, so they, they, they're fine with the January session. Which will either be the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first. You get your pick, cause you're five months in January.
And that'll give them some time to, uh, talk about that. So that brings us to Jack's piece of the pie here. Number seven, consideration of whether to participate in or opt out of class action settlements related to PFAS and drinking water sources from Equius Film Forming Foam's report from the city attorney. We got two, settlement involving DuPont and settlement involving 3M.
Yes, uh, there are two class action suits. With respect to each of them, the options are either to participate or to opt out if the city or technically its utility participates, then it will be necessary to submit claim forms in both litigation. Uh, opt out, same thing. You have to submit what's called a request for exclusion. The settlement agreement set forth terms for each, there are actually forms for submission of claims uh, provided by the court. There are no forms for requests for exclusions, but the agreement sets forth the information to be, uh, obtained or to be submitted rather to the, you know, special master. And, uh, that is in charge of making the determination whether or not the exclusion is effective to exclude. Yourself, obviously, you have to be a claimant or an eligible claimant. Two Rivers seems to be eligible based on my reading of the settlement agreements and what's available from the court file, so I don't think there's any doubt as to that. Uh, I wish I could tell you more regarding how other municipalities are handling this, particularly those that, uh, are adjacent to, to the lake, to Lake Michigan, which would seem to be most, uh, similar to, to our situation here. From what I understand, Manitowoc hasn't decided yet, but will decide tomorrow. I think there are public works at Public Utilities Committee is meeting today, I think, at four o'clock, so they may need to, to make a recommendation. But I can tell you that the municipalities I know of that are willing to participate, that want to participate, are Brookfield, the Village of Rid Mountain, Wausau, Madison and Humalaska. Those who want to opt out are Germantown, Stevens Point, Appleton and Janesville. Been trying to learn more. My understanding is Shavoyan was supposed to have a meeting on this. And Kenosha may actually be meeting on it, uh, today sometime, but I haven't gotten any information back from them as of yet. The 3M settlement will have available ten point three two, ten point five and twelve point five billion. The DuPont is much smaller, roughly one point eight billion dollars. There's no way, unfortunately, we can really tell what the city might be eligible for. There have been tests done which indicate that there are PFAS in our public water system. The amounts thus far are fairly minimal, and by my understanding, have required any action on part of the city, uh, to remediate. Both settlements do provide for, uh, submitting future claims if there's an increase in PFAS levels. Uh, the, the amounts being paid out, especially by 3M, uh, payments are supposed to be made on an annual basis. But the individuals who make that decision are appointed by the court. The decision, I mean, is who's gonna get what, who's gonna get how much. There's really no way we can determine that. It is pretty clear that those who have higher levels of PFAS will be getting larger settlement allocations than those with the small ones. But I guess I don't know whether we could make, uh, any kind of clear or certain estimates of, of what we might end up with. With respect to opting out, I, I guess this is a situation where I think you have to weigh the options available to you. Uh, what are the pros and cons of opting in or opting out? If you opt in, you must make certain to file a claim, because if you fail to file a claim, then you're just gonna be treated as one of the participants regardless. And the court will have jurisdiction over you, and you will, by the terms of these agreements, release all claims against 3M and DuPont. Uh, and be unable to bring any in the future, even if there are increases in PFAS levels, because you're releasing future claims as well, uh, that arise out of any kind of contamination for which the defendants are responsible. The releases, I, in both agreements are extensive, but they seem to be limited to claims arising from PFAS which contaminate, uh, drinking water or are associated with water sources or, or lakes that is affiliated or used by your, your wa, drinking water utility systems. Otherwise, if, for example, landfills in the city are found to be contaminated with PFAS, uh, you are not releasing claims related to that. And you're not releasing claims against parties other than the named defendants on 3, 3M and DuPont. There are others, other manufacturers who have polluted the environment through PFAS. As I say, I wish I could give you a better idea of what the city could guess, because that would obviously be the most important factor. But it's, uh, it's just, I know no way of doing that. I know A- Andrew had a look at the allocation, uh, formula, but I don't know if you can come up with anything, even a guess as, as to what the city might, might get, because we simply don't know what the information from the other public water systems are. You don't know how badly they're affected, or how bad their contamination is. That's all up in the air. Filing the claims must be done within a given period of time after the court decides at a final hearing whether or not these settlement agreements are reasonable. Uh, that's not going to take place immediately in the DuPont matter. That will take place, by my understanding, on December fourteenth. That's when the court hearing is. And then you have sixty days to file a claim. After that, uh, one and DuPont or?
3M, right?
Yeah, 3M would be, uh, February second. You have a chance of getting, getting some money, which in the case of 3M, if, let's say you get money from 3M, that money could go right into the General Fund based on information I received. It doesn't have to be voted, voted to remediating or cleaning up or trying to get rid of the PFAS. Settlement proceeds received from DuPont are supposed to be conditioned on their use, uh, to remediate. And it seems we're not in possession or we're compelled to do so at this time.
It would probably be smart to put it in a fund for teacher remediation.
I, I, that's, that's my thought as well. You don't wanna dump that in the General Fund. You wanna segregate it somehow so it's available, uh, for the remediation. So you don't run into problems like DuPont trying to come back and say, uh, you didn't use it the right way, so you lost that money. Uh, if you opt out, you're not releasing any claims. You're not receiving any money by virtue of these class action settlements. If problems result if the city has to spend money in remediating PFAS in the future, that's going to be basically the city's problem. And it would be the city that would end up spending money directly in litigating in the event it wanted to try to make a recovery against the responsible party. It could make claims against 3M or DuPont or anybody else. Uh, the, the problem is how much money you can expect to spend trying to litigate on your own against those manufacturers. And that can be very extensive. It'll likely take place at federal court. Uh, the defendants will likely have access to more money than the city of Two Rivers if they want to avoid liability settlements. In the civil realm, they'll go through the discovery process of higher experts. There's a, there's a problem that the possibility is the city may get outspent if it goes on its own, unless another class could be forced, uh, that the city could participate in. We don't have much time to opt out. If we do, um, DuPont. Let's see, DuPont, keep getting those.
DuPont is the closer deadline.
DuPont is December fourth, next week, Monday. That's when the request for exclusion has to be filed with the administrator. 3M is December eleventh. That's kinda weird there.
My one time.
Trying to answer a question to you.
My one time. Is that, I'm asking my one time.
Oh, time of day?
Yeah, I mean, is it after a meeting on December fourth, or is it by close?
The problem is, the problem is there's communication that we could file it electronically.
Oh, got it.
Uh, we may be stuck with sending it by mail. I will be contacting, you're, you're supposed to follow the federal service rule, and that doesn't provide for, uh, electronic services. So I, I know we could copy the other participants electronically if they consent. I will contact the administrator, uh, in the DuPont matter to see if it would consent, because, you know, then we can do that, obviously, maybe as late as December fourth. Uh, I'm sure it would have to be during our business hour.
Basically, if I understand right, they admit it a hell of a lot easier to.
Oh, yes.
Opt in than to opt out.
Now, I haven't been able to find any forms for the request for exclusion. Uh, I do have, the state of California, actually I just found out fairly recently, has, uh, suggested forms that you have to have an affidavit of company out here. And, uh, so that would be very useful. I'm sure we can get them out. If we're stuck, uh, sending them by mail, or certified mail, we'd wanna get them out as soon as we can, obviously, especially with respect to December fourth.
It's been hard too to even find much in the way of gee, what is everybody else doing? What are other Wisconsin utilities doing? What are other Lake Michigan, Wisconsin utilities doing? Jack has been periodically sending me updates. Based on the league keeping, the league has polled what a couple of times now.
I think you've got Just once really that I saw.
And so from what I've seen, we know that opting out are Stevens Point, Appleton, Janesville and McJuan. McJuan buys the water from somebody else, so maybe Lake Michigan water, clearly Appleton, Janesville, Stevens Point are
They might have, might be Lake Michigan water, but I'm not sure.
McJuan is.
McJuan, yeah.
You would think so, yeah.
They buy from Salt Milwaukee.
They buy from, really?
Yeah, Salt, or I'm sorry, Salt Milwaukee or North Milwaukee.
Okay. Lake North Shore.
North Shore.
North Shore Water Pickup. So far that we know of saying they're gonna participate in the, in class action settlements on Alaska, Wausau, Madison, Brookfield, Rivemont, again Rivemont not by Wausau. I don't know, Brookfield's water might ultimately come from Lake Michigan but they're in Waukesha County so I'm not sure if they're Waukesha if they do. I reached out to Mirene Golds today and that this is the subject, was the subject of an MPU meeting late this afternoon and they're holding a special counsel meeting on Thursday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday to make a decision. It is response.
I'm worried about the DuPont request for exclusion because if you look at the notice the card I sent out says the request for exclusion must be sent via certified or first-class mail to the notice administrator and is effective upon receipt.
Receipt.
Yeah. 3M, Juan, you filed with the court.
I have a question. Why would the, why would some municipalities not participate?
If they, I would think that they would not participate if they feel that their chances of getting any kind of significant benefit are fairly slim from participating in the settlement. And they have concerns that the PFAS levels may increase in the future if they feel that they have potential for liability exposure in the future. They want to keep their options open with respect to being able to sue 3M or DuPont or any other manufacturer at that time because you're releasing your claims if you participate.
I think that's where we're gonna fall because our PFAS levels aren't very high for requiring remediation. So it opens us up to, we might not get a whole lot of compensation out of this because our levels aren't high enough, doing things about it. So if that's the case, we might not really get any compensation if we're not doing anything to treat water.
My general feeling is I think we should opt out because if PFAS becomes a big deal in the future, we're gonna be hand strapped without suing them and I get it that we would be one against them but I think there's gonna be a lot of other people that opt out that their levels will go up just like ours do and we could join together to get the monies that we actually need to fix the problem, treat the water, whatever it may be versus getting a small lump sum now that that might not even put a dent in it in the future. We hope that future never happens, but there's a possibility of that happening in the future.
If there is, if a large number of water systems decide to opt out, that could affect the settlement themselves. They may have to throw out the settlement if not enough people are willing to participate. Because obviously the defendants here 3M and DuPont don't wanna dump this amount of money, billions of dollars and make it available if it appears that a large number of public water systems remain are not releasing claims of like
How many states are involved?
Oh, I think it's all across the country.
It is, so it's all, it's all
And the exhibits.
That's not a lot of money across every water system. I can tell you that much right now.
Every state has public water systems that are involved.
Andrew, have you poured, I'm sorry.
This is a question for Matt. The PFAS that are in the water that comes from our storm sewers and goes into a stormwater pond, do those settle to the bottom or do they float around in the water that then goes to our rivers?
I have no knowledge of that, so I can't answer that. I know we have had needed our reduced waters but we have never tested anything in stormwater around.
Because what I'm afraid of is that if it doesn't settle to the bottom and it's released out into our rivers, that's really gonna count against us. And the science behind them deciding what all the levels are isn't there. So we would just blindly be, you know, making a decision because we don't know what the ultimate decision is. And we might be golden right now, but then once they come out with, you know, concrete numbers, we might really be in trouble. And this is just going to get worse. I mean, it's a messy train wreck right now. And I think like I said last time, DuPont and 3M aren't out there to be super helpful to us. They're big business, it's all money. And one of the things that bothers me is the fact that typically for something like this, if you don't respond, it is an automatic opt-out. These guys have it switched, which I think is really sneaky. And I'm sure there's gonna be communities who don't do their due diligence and inadvertently opting in and that might not be the best decision for them. I don't see anything good coming from this if we opt in. We don't know what the dollar amount would be. We don't know what our, what's gonna be acceptable. It's too much of a crapshoot. And I'd feel way better opting out of it.
I certainly hope those ponds can't get these PFAS since we spent a whole lot of money in stormwater ponds to not do their job.
Can you find out, Matt?
I'll have to do some, Andrew, does the PFAS settle out or?
Well, I understand the PFAS here have to be associated with drinking water or the water supplies you use for drinking water.
I think Darrell's concern is what's in that pond and when it floats back out there, we do suck it back in.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that you're gonna get it to settle on the pond like you are the other settlement.
So then we're just letting it go to the rivers, the rivers go to the lake, we drink it. You know, and they're saying it's only, it only applies to drinking water.
The settlement does. You know, one of the problems with PFAS too is, yes, there was pollution from these companies when they were doing their foam and stuff like that, but there's still other PFAS contamination. So when you take, you know, like at the wastewater plant, I don't know what the levels are there, but those levels are gonna be way higher than I take it from Lake Michigan. Because it's going through all the plumbing fixtures in your home and stuff. It can be on like plumber's tape and stuff like that. So when it gets to the wastewater plant, it not only has one, it is when it comes into Lake Michigan, we add a bunch as it goes through your home and then back up.
If, so It has to be associated with drinking water now. For example, the land on which the water utility is situated, we might find that there are PFAS involved. As I read the releases, we're not gonna be able to make any kind of claim for those if we go, if we participate in the settlement, we release claims. Anything associated with our drinking water utility, our drinking water system, our supplies or what we use to obtain drinking water are basically going to be out the window or waving or releasing any claims as to those, at least with respect to these defendants.
So I got a question. If we, let's say we hypothetically would opt out and let's say the Lake Michigan levels do increase to a point where we would have to add remediation. So then we would have to, whether it's by ourselves or with a bunch of other people, participate in our own class action lawsuit. Would we get to a point of doing that where our costs for lawyer fees are above us just buying the equipment? Or when do we get the lawyer fee money back?
You wouldn't necessarily get your attorney's fees paid for. Typically you don't get that unless there's some sort of provision in the law which allows you to recover attorneys. I have no idea what the cost would be getting the beer, what kind of equipment you'd need. But I think once you get into litigation, you should expect your fees are gonna be substantial.
I mean, if you start talking fees that are, you know, upwards of, upper hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think it definitely, we're gonna break even just buying the equipment or something.
All I can say is that's a possibility.
So then if you opt in, at least you get something.
But I'm just guessing.
The odds are if we ever happen to be party to a litigation, we better hope there's some other folks to ban down because so obviously companies like 3M and DuPont have a lot more resources than Two Rivers.
You're paying, you're also paying obviously for the mediation. You don't have any money from any other source or from a responsible party who can throw it to pay for the cost of remediating and cleaning either. So you face that, less insurance, you pay for that one, I don't know. I mean, the cost.
I just wanted to point out, you know, there is, the 3M proposed settlement is a lot larger group of money.
Some happens.
There's a matrix that is to indicate an estimated allocation per impacted water source that takes into account a PFAS score based on your testing and adjusted flow rate, how much water flows through the utility. That would point in the neighborhood of $715,000.
That's what I can
Yeah, so it's not an insignificant sum of money. On the other hand, with how much ultimately ends up available to Two Rivers would be totally different question. And Jack, this isn't a lump sum payment either.
No, no, it's paid up, annual payments are anticipated, at least as far as 3M is concerned by my understanding.
At the end of the day, they're certainly not doing it for charity or anything.
No, altruistic, yeah.
If none of this lawsuit, does that stop them from ever getting any others? Another class action? I don't know how legality works on that.
Well, I guess other actions are possible provided that the claims are released.
So it could be another class action if it's made up of claimants who didn't participate.
Who opted out, for example.
Right.
Or other claimants who aren't even involved in the, in the classes that were represented in these actions.
Well, it shouldn't be too hard if they're essentially pleading, I don't wanna say pleading guilty, but if they're essentially owning this, it should be hard to take them to court later on. Pointing to the fact that, hey.
Unless they get a federal cab on how much they pay out and they already paid it out, everybody else later gets it out.
Right. Can you say a class action settlement is proof positive?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how hard they fought this. You know, and it may be that confronted, I mean, there are thousands, something like 12,000 public water sources that were aimed as class participants. It's hard for me to say, you know, how easy it would be to litigate with these guys. Particularly say a single municipality.
Right. I have all the confidence in Jack.
I'm retiring soon.
You're who?
Retiring soon.
I mean, do you want to vote on this?
I think we really have to because it's December 4th next week Monday. If the, if the council decides to opt out, they have to prepare a resolution.
Uh, which I didn't copy so.
And I, because one of the things you have to do to opt out is prove that you have the authority to do so. They're looking for something like this, they want an affidavit inside indicating that you have authority and so forth. The ordinance says the city manager has the authority to opt out of utilities. So I think it'd be great that would actually be signing as a request for this.
If you wanna fly me to the West Coast to assure timely service, put me in a UPS container.
The Carolinas.
Oh, it's in the, the Carolinas, it's nice this time of year.
We'll make sure it's the best grade ever.
Listen, damn, no air holes, we knew we were driving.
What I tried to do here was basically first paragraph, identify the litigation and the fact that Two Rivers Water Utility was named as an participant in the class and is eligible under the settlement as a claimant if it decides to do so. I mentioned the fact that the third wire has a provision utilities should be deemed to be subject to jurisdiction of the court in which class actions have been filed into these all claims that they have. If it decides to file a claim or if it does not opt out from the settlement because I think as Darrell said, you're kinda stuck. You're a member of the class even if you do nothing and don't file a claim. You're basically out of court as far as that's concerned. Then I tried and the fourth wire is to kind of infer reasons why the city council might opt out because basically possibility that the level of PFAS will change or regulations may change. The impact of PFAS on the environment and health is, you know, still hasn't been completely determined at this time and we can't determine the share of the proceeds of the settlement. So if those are the reasons why the city council would wanna opt out, is you know, it basically makes the determination to be kind of trade with the best interest of its citizens and property on participating. Then you authorize the city manager to decide and file a complete request for exclusion on behalf of the utility. I really wish I could provide you with more information. This is, it is kind of a crapshoot.
But the 3M settlement is actually about 10.5 billion dollars.
10.5 to 12 points.
You know, it's really hard to say how much we get and I know we can estimate all we want but if every municipality goes in, that number's not gonna be the same. If half of them opt out, that number's gonna go up. I mean, it's, it's hard to say what we get and knowing that there's some at least that opted out, my feeling already when this was first presented was I would rather opt out than I would opt in as one person, knowing that we can, when you release everything that you can possibly do in the future is kind of a scary thing, especially when we have minimal PFAS in our water right now. But what will that amount to later on and what will that cost be? Knowing that we can't do a thing about it except for absorb those costs. There's no guarantee that if we try to sue later on in life that we win either. So I mean, it's a, it's a tough one to do, but. So I mean, it's a tough one to do, but I would stay with the fact that I would, if it was me personally, and if this was, the city was my particular business, I would opt out, knowing that I could join other forces later on in life, and I could take this on, and maybe get more money to do what's needed and recommended or forced upon us by the DNR and the EPA and anyone else that has to do with this stuff. My.
Really, I'm thinking, well, opt in is, because we don't know that there's not a cap that they're gonna ever have to pay, whatever this is might be it. And then therefore, anybody that opted out, there's nothing to go after. So there's too many unknowns on the whole thing too. So, like you said, Jack, it's kind of a coin toss on this. So do you take an hour and hope for the future or?
I mean, if you're talking about drinking water, highly regulated, probably weren't anything. You have to, I think, we have to leave this open for ourselves to, you know, we get subject to a problem, we should be able to sue them. I don't think we'll be able to stop it.
Right, but if they're.
They can say they opted out, but we've opted out for the reason.
Right. But I mean, if there is a limit that they're ever gonna have to pay on this topic, then we just, we ended it.
But when do they make that case to cap it though? Before or after?
To cap it? Well, these are, these are capped at the amounts.
Right, but that is for this loss.
For this loss.
For these two class actions.
Right.
But in the future? I, I don't know. Either they'd have to, either a law would have to be adopted, limiting the amount of damages payable. Or they'd have to.
So that would be a federal loss.
Lose money, they, you know, they may not have the money available to pay the future actions. And again, we're not just talking about, as far as I know, it isn't just 3M and DuPont that are responsible for PFAS. I think there are others as well. And what money they have or what money will be available there. Whether there will be enough money to pay for future claims. I just don't know. But I think a cap would have to be created by the government. I think there could have to be some sort of legislation to that.
How often do you have to test for PFAS?
So there really hasn't been any set regulations until this year. We do a UCMR testing, which is mandated through the EPA, that's every five years. This is the first time they've implemented it being mandatory through that. This is also the first year that Wisconsin DNR mandated it. I don't know if the DNR next year is gonna mandate any testing for us, but I believe the EPA testing that we did this year, we probably won't do again for at least five years. But there is a chance that, you know, the Wisconsin DNR could have us do once a year for the next couple of years, but I haven't seen anything in our 2024 regulatory sample that says we have to.
What's your gut instinct?
I don't know.
Numbers are gonna increase, decrease, stay the same?
So what I can tell you.
It's a forever chemical. Special polymer that was in the fire extinguisher, but I don't know what's used in other things too.
Oh yeah, nonstick coatings, rainwater, rain holes.
You're probably, nobody's gonna manufacture it, probably, after this happens. Look, we can't control stuff coming out of China alone and stuff like that, so.
But you know, one thing with that is, for clean water, phosphorus is a huge issue. And as far as I understand, if you or I went and purchased fertilizer for our lawns, they can't have phosphorus in it. But the bigger farms, they don't have that same regulation. And so right there, I mean, and their runoff goes into our river and comes down this way, and it's gonna affect what our readings are and... I, I don't know.
I worry too that, these are forever chemicals, so hypothetically, whether it's 50 years, 200 years from now, are those levels gonna slowly increase? I would say probably, right? I mean, they have to, they're not gonna go down, because they're forever chemicals, they don't break down. So at some point, I would assume they're gonna slowly keep creeping up. Lake Michigan's huge. Is there gonna come to a time where maybe we hit that threshold that we do have to do remediation? I mean, we went from zero PFAS to right now, or about 2.0. I don't know how long it would take to get to four, where we would need to do something about it. But then there's the flip of the coin of, any of those businesses is gonna be around too soon when we get to a point where it's that bad.
Doesn't anybody have a remediation method yet for this?
Well, they started developing something about a year or two ago, and this problem really started coming about that when people were finding it. Most of the real issues with PFAS in the drinking water does stem from well water, where it's collected and it's a smaller source. Lake Michigan for us is huge, so it's not very concentrated. But the well water utilities, especially in the La Salle area, are getting hit pretty hard with it. So they are gonna be forced to put some type of remediation in. You know, the, it was interesting, because there was a statistic that a guy in Illinois ran through on a 20 million gallon a day water plant, with the levels in Lake Michigan right now. You know, you, this is parts per trillion, so you're talking, 20 million gallons a day, the removal is like less than a pound. I mean, it's tiny, but it's not good for you, so.
Also, apparently had its own litigation going against another party up there, but I don't know whose status.
So you're thinking it'd be better to opt in?
I don't know, to be honest. I wish I could give you more advice, dude, I just, there's so many variables.
If we opt out for these two companies, we could still go after different, some of these two companies.
If we opt out, but, you know, obviously, we can pursue claims against 3M and DuPont or and other responsible parties as well.
I mean, the state of Wisconsin and some other states, their attorneys general have filed petitions to the settlement.
Yeah, those have to be, I don't think those have been sacrificed to court.
Right, I think the court gave preliminary approval to the settlement, regardless of the Wisconsin filing was in August. Part of their argument is that ultimately, the cost of cleaning up PFAS in drinking water is that a far higher cost than the settlement. I was just reading this on Bloomberg Law. The other argument was, well, with a payout over 12 years, will the paying corporation, in this case 3M, still be around? At that time, will they still be around?
So maybe it's better to opt in, keep those, those payments, get us annually, as it's not a lump sum, as Jack, I think, or Greg, one of you two just pointed out. Maybe it's better to go into a strip fund that is solely for PFAS remediation, should that time come.
If the council were to choose, direct to participate in settlement, yeah, I would advise going and spending it on related stuff. Tempting is that might be, you know, for anybody. Because you might end up with a bill specific to cleaning up PFAS in drinking water that's substantial. Might be a whole lot more than any settlement. That's the gray that, you know. I, I, this is a tough one. I've got some real misgivings about taking.
What do they do with their one state cash?
It's a good question. I, some type of landfill, I would assume. Well, that's a very good cycle. I really don't know, to be honest with you, but.
Greg's right, attorney generals have objections to that. Can't recall Wisconsin.
Yeah, Josh Call did.
Because they say, it's, they don't think, but they're agreeing to pay it off to take care of the problem. And that's probably true, but that's what settlements are about.
So probably not gonna get enough money to get a remediation system out of that. I mean, if we get enough money for that, then it would be a good thing to opt in, but not knowing.
Yeah, and I wouldn't even know where to even get a quote from, because these things are so new. You know, I mean, you know, years down the road, if the concentration in that lake did actually get that high, I would think by then, they'd have these systems panned out, it'd be a whole lot cheaper than if you had to go buy one. But then again, too, by the time we would need it, who knows what the cost of, all the material would be due as well.
According to Wisconsin Public Radio, Wisconsin's attorney general was among 22 attorneys general who asked the court to reject 3M's proposed deal. Now, that was at the end of July, and I don't know.
I don't know if that's been decided. Because if the court had decided, it was an unreasonable, unreasonable settlement, we wouldn't be talking about. There was a deadline for filing objections, which is passed. And as I say, my expectation is those dates I gave, like December 14th, February 2nd, when the.
I thought you said December 4th.
Final hearings in December 4th. Maybe that would be when the court decides.
Unfortunately, the deadline for us making a decision to be in or out is in advance.
I, you know, I don't, I don't like this, I mean, I don't like this. And especially when they give you notice like September or October, and you have a limited amount of time to make a decision. Kind of wonder.
Yeah, that bothers me, but.
Are they settling too soon? I don't, oh. Speculate, but I.
Yeah, that's what bothers me, are they settling too fast, too soon? Are they trying to settle now, so, you know, something else doesn't come up later, and they have to pay more money or something?
You gotta assume these corporations have determined it's in the shareholders' best interest to offer up the settlement, as big as it sounds. And if it's true, I don't know, if it's truly paid over 12 years, let's just pretend the 3M settlement for Two Rivers would be $750,000. Over the course of 12 years, that's just a little over $60,000 a year in chicken feed, but. You're trained. You know, what, however small the likelihood that you have that we face a significant bill to clean up drinking water because of PFAS related to aqueous foam, God knows, I have no idea, but is it worth taking them off the hook? I'm assuming those are equally annual payments, I don't know if they would be, but payments that are only under $300,000, which is the dollar amount, but over 12 years.
Do they put that money in some sort of?
You're guaranteed the $750,000, that'd be one thing too, because we could accumulate interest also for the next years to offset that cost, my worry though is, and Jack, you can speak to this, none of that's really guaranteed.
So does that money go to a trust? Or how does that get paid yearly, so they pay that upfront? Goes into a trust, not that they claim bankruptcy or something in future years and then stop?
Good point, because that has been raised as an argument against the settlement. Will companies be around and pay out on full 12, 10 and a half to 12?
If it goes into a trust, because they gotta pay it upfront, that's one thing versus them paying it on the helm.
I've gone back and forth like three or four times today, in my head.
I do that every day.
Opt out?
Three or four times.
Uh, maybe we should have.
Look like PFAS.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, how old is this? 10 years old, I mean, how long have they been talking about this?
I mean, I can't, I know the DNR's been keeping an eye on it for a while. It's really hit the drinking water scene in probably the last two years because of, there's one little island over by the cross that got hit really hard. Can't remember the name of it. That's when we started, the state started realizing that there's gonna be significant on Alaska. Realizing there's gonna be the possibility for significant issues once we actually started testing in the drinking water, right? Because until last year, this wasn't, testing in the drinking water wasn't even required.
Didn't we test in the drinking water, though, even though it wasn't required?
We did not.
So we don't know what it was, five years ago?
We specifically don't, but Illinois has been testing, so I, I can't say that I can get the actual documentation, but it would have been recorded at the EPA, so we couldn't get it. And I know from the findings from down in Illinois, from the people that I've talked to, they've been getting these, you know, right around two parts per trillion, like we tested for the last like five years.
I'll check, I gotta get another question.
Let's see. Phase one action. 3M is making payments, multiple installment. First installment will be paid within 650 days after the effective date, that's what the court approves. But it even, no, earlier than July 2024. This is the fourth of the payment schedule. Nine subsequent payments will be made annually thereafter for nine years on April 15th of each calendar year.
So not all painted at once? Okay, that's his question. So then the theory of. So then the theory of them going out of business in 12 years and we can't sue them is almost the same as saying that they may be out of business in nine years and people that sue them now might not be getting that money either.
Right.
So that's a piece, I guess, of that one. So they're out of business for one, they're going out of business for all.
Yeah, I don't know if they could escape this by going bankrupt.
Well, they'd almost, you almost have to, because what else are you gonna do, you don't have the money.
That's true.
There was in the initial settlement proposal, what I understood, be an indemnification provision, where if you take the settlement, you can find 3M from other claims saved in your municipality. Some are health effects, but as near as I can tell from the press accounts at least, that provision got removed. So you wouldn't be on the hook, say, for, God forbid, like a cancer cluster or something that evolved in the area, in the population you serve with your water.
Yeah, okay. It was agreed that the order granting final approval will specify the settlement as, "Good faith, it powers any claim by any non-released party against any released party for contribution for indemnification, or otherwise seeking to recover any amounts paid." for contribution for indemnification, or otherwise seeking to recover any amounts paid awarded against the non-released party. Oh yeah, it seems to be, it seems to be the case.
So it's an awful thing to lay in your laps. I'm, I'm torn on it. Well, honestly, I'd be torn, saying, let's not participate, let's opt out of this.
That's all right, man.
It's, it sounds like a windfall that we, we never want looking for, but it also absolves two big companies, have potentially huge liability. But I, I have no sense of probability we could run at one into that liability.
We don't know what the liability will be, and we don't know how hard it will be for the city to recover.
Yeah, I just have a hard time, I mean, having taxpayers and ratepayers saying, well, you know what? It's your call, council, but we, we judged that it was, it was worth the risk to take to gigantic corporations off the hook for liability.
You know, I think that made me say maybe opt in afterwards, I was listening to Andrew, and he said, well, they go bankrupt. But once we found out that the money's not going in the trust, they can do that to the claimants as well, that are already in this lawsuit, so it'd be a lose-lose.
And you'd think if it becomes a bigger issue in the future, for Lake Michigan, for example, you would think everyone on both sides of the lake would have similar issues, so there would be some kind of funding or something that helps.
And the, right, and the states are not participating in the settlement, so, you know, what rights would the state of Wisconsin practice? You know, this is the drinking water for millions of people in our state, we're going in.
Okay, we are looking for action on this, so I'm going to take a motion of some sort from somebody, whether you want to opt in or opt out, feel free to opt either way. Not that by it matters more than anyone else's, because it does not. I would opt out.
I will make a motion to opt out.
We have an opt-out motion by Scott, and we have another one by Bonnie. Council, yes.
She's seconded.
She's seconded, yes.
Seconding.
Not, not a different one.
So just motion and a second by Bonnie.
And, and would that actual action then take the form of endorsing this resolution and the appropriate filing authority to the resolution?
According to resolution, that was handed up like right tonight.
Any other council discussion on this one before we put it to a roll call? That's my cue to Lisa to hold this one roll call. See none? Roll call, hold Lisa.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Darrell Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimerunis?
Aye.
Scott's take question?
Aye.
Adam Mosky?
Aye.
Jeff Dolke?
No. All right, then.
I have a quarter, Jeff.
Is, is that 6-1? Okay, 6-1, motion carries to opt out, thank you for the long discussion. Thank you, Jack, for being here, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, and as a motion by Jeff, seconded by Bill. For clarification, council discussion. See none, all favor, they give me a say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
If you want to raise, rent escapes next Saturday will be open.